Energy Resources. The department hereby opens this public hearing on the revised 225 CMR 20 Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target SMART Program Emergency Regulations. On March 10th, 2020, Governor Baker issued Executive Order Number 591 Declaration of a State Emergency to respond to COVID-19 with the current state of emergency and the physical closure of state offices. Non-emergency executive branch employees have been directed to work remotely and where possible, use available telecommunications technology to conduct agency business activities normally done in person. As a result, DOER is holding this public hearing on the regulations and guidelines virtually. During the registration process, DOER has requested that parties please indicate in advance if they wish to provide oral testimony. Please note, those who did not indicate their wish to testify in advance during registration will have an opportunity to testify after those who have previously indicated have testified at the end of the public hearing. As stated in the public notice, on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, DOER filed revised 225 CMR 20 with the Secretary of the Commonwealth as an emergency regulation. This regulatory update is the result of DOER's review of the SMART program engagement with stakeholders, which began upon the qualification of 400 megawatts of solar tariff generation units. As an emergency regulation, these regulations went into effect immediately. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive verbal testimony on the changes to the SMART regulation. Please note that this public hearing is being recorded and will be posted to the department's website. The department requests that, to the extent possible, when submitting written copies, that you should submit written copies of your testimony. Eric Stelter will commence with the order of registered parties for oral testimony. Eric, I'm handing it over to you.
Great, thanks so much there, Ben. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for participating. I hope everybody is staying safe and healthy in these times that we're in. I am going to share my screen right now, so everybody should see that now. And it provides a list of the people who have registered to provide verbal testimonies today. In total, we have a little over 60 people. Given the time that we have, that will mean that each person has two minutes to speak. I will also give a period of time at the end in case there is anyone who has not had an opportunity to share that they would like to provide some testimony. I'll give them an opportunity to speak as well. Given the time, I really encourage people to be brief and to the point with their comments that they'd like to share, and I would also encourage people to submit written testimony. As folks should know, we sent out an announcement earlier this week that extended the public comment period to the first of June at 5:00 PM, so please get your comments into us before then. As we go through, this is all new territory for us, but as we go through the list, I will be calling out not only the person who is speaking, but then I will also mention the person who is next up to speak. After, when I call your name to speak, I would ask that you just raise your hands, and then I will unmute your line so that you have an opportunity to speak. And then I think that's how we will progress through that. So without further ado and to get going on things, so the first speaker is Todd Freyett, and next up will be Thomas Milan. Todd, raise your hand, please. Okay, Todd, I do think I found you here, so I'm going to unmute your line there, Todd. Todd, Ken, go ahead. Okay, Todd didn't get you there, so we'll move on to the next person, but we'll go back to you. Let's go to Thomas Milan, and then next up is Erica Niedewski. Thomas, if you could raise your hand. Okay. I do see Todd has raised his hand now, so I'm gonna, and I don't see Erica or Thomas has raised his hand, so let's go to Todd Freyett. I have unmuted your line.
Well, thank you. This is Todd from ECA Solar speaking. Appreciate the opportunity. We just have four brief comments we'd like to make. Number one, we'd like the, under the regulations, there to be a provision that terminations for SOQ, meaning awards that are not rate-based, are not paid, and never happen, that that data is made publicly available and shared with a report. Number two, we'd like to say that we do support the land use restrictions. We know there was some dialogue about what was included in the straw polls on what was not, but we support that. Number three, we would like there to be a carve-out for rooftop solar arrays from the battery mandate. Just a regular carve-out that's included from mandating batteries for over 500 KW AC. And number four, we also support the addition of the public adder, which I believe is 4 cents. And we'd like to, a clarification on whether or not that public adder that's provided eliminates any and all of the land use concerns, whether if it's on private land, and if that's automatically category two, even if it's on, you know, sensitive habitat or sensitive land, if that's an exception to that land use restriction. Thank you.
Great, thanks there, Todd. Speaking next will be Thomas Milan, and then on deck is Erica Niedewski. Thomas, the mic is yours now.
Hi, good morning.
Thomas, your mic just went muted again. I'll unmute you again. Okay, the floor is yours, Thomas.
I wanted to comment on the land use and siting criteria. The use of the core habitat and the critical landscape maps. To my knowledge, those maps are not created with input from landowners. So when you have a priority habitat, when those maps go out, the landowners have the ability to comment. And it seems unfair that somebody's land would be, you know, neutered from the ability to have solar on it without the landowner's ability to comment on whether or not they agree with that core habitat or the critical natural landscape designation. So the use of that seems unfair to the landowners, in my mind. And then in addition, the 50% rule where you're prohibited, if you have a lot with 50% core habitat or critical natural landscape seems onerous to large landowners. So I could have a 500-acre parcel, 250 acres could be core habitat, the other 250 acres could be paved parking lot, and that lot would be unusable. So it seems that that is particularly onerous, creating basically a buffer area to the critical natural landscape or the core habitat that just doesn't seem fair. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you there. So next up is, to speak is Erica Niedewski, and then on deck is Chris Sarkoka. Erica, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the department, specifically to Commissioner Woodcock, for the opportunity to provide testimony. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Coalition for Community Solar Access, which represents dozens of community solar companies that are developing clean energy projects throughout the Commonwealth. We appreciate the 1,600-megawatt expansion of SMART, and doubling the program's capacity will help fulfill our mission of expanding access to solar regardless of housing type or income level. However, CCSA and its industry partners do plan to file joint comments that highlight various issues that could result in critical projects being canceled, and perhaps most importantly, significant unnecessary harm to our economy at a moment when we can least afford it. I'm going to just briefly talk about two issues while I let my industry colleagues take the others today. The first is around new land use restrictions. CCSA understands and appreciates the concerns around land conservation, but the regulation, in our view, goes too far, effectively prohibiting ground-mounted solar in many communities, particularly Western and Southeastern Massachusetts. One layer, the critical natural landscape layer alone, takes 1.8 million acres off the table, even though other development would still be allowed. One example of a project that would have to be canceled is owned by a local cranberry farmer Southeastern Massachusetts. It's been in development for over two years and would provide tax revenue of $750,000 over 20 years to the host municipality. That project would have to be canceled, and the cranberry farmer and municipality would lose a valuable economic development opportunity. Another issue I just want to touch on has to do with community solar subscription requirements. We are requesting that DOER allow a 12-month grace period for community solar and low-income community solar to achieve 90% subscription. We've sent a separate letter to the commissioner providing further details. As you'll, just to sum up, you'll hear from my industry colleagues today about numerous other concerns, including grandfathering, statement of qualifications, and resetting base rates. All of these things might sound technical, but collectively, they could halt the development of nearly 70 local solar products, projects totaling 477 megawatts. Losing these projects would cost the Commonwealth at least 1,500 jobs this year and $731 million in economic investment. Just to close, given the significant emergency unfolding across Massachusetts, given the COVID crisis, the state can't afford to implement rules that will essentially abandon shovel-ready and local economic development opportunities. So we are asking DOER to reconsider the most restrictive measures in these regulations, and we look forward to working productively with you in the weeks ahead. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Great, thank you. Next up to speak is Chris Kiorka, and then Thomas Malone is on deck. Chris, the mic is yours.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So I was hoping that I would be able to just comment on, at the conclusion of the stakeholders' meetings that we had many months ago at the University of Massachusetts. I also attended one down at the community college down near the Cape. At that time, there were a lot of public comments, and I commented at both of those presentations. And in those presentations, I was bringing up the, what is the economic inequality between the territories on the smaller-sized projects? And that in the development of SMART's overall program, in your, you know, in the prototype program, you focused based everything on large-scale solar. So I brought up the fact that the cost of doing a residential system or the investment for a Massachusetts taxpayer to do solar on his house is more rewarding on EverSource East than it is on EverSource West. And I was hoping that the DOER would be able to come up with some sort of solution to that, because I don't find that to be a fair and equitable program, which is statewide. And I just hope that the DOER has the opportunity to look at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you there, Chris. Next to speak is Thomas Malone, if you could raise your hand, and then Rick Dobreloff is next on deck. Thomas, the floor is yours.
Hi, this is Tom Malone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. I think overall, the expansion of the program obviously is a good one. So I'll just have a few brief points in my two minutes here. It would be useful, I think, as a general matter, if there was some explanation that DOER made that accompanied each of the changes, to understand what the reasoning is, because it's hard to understand just the abstract without any kind of rationale in terms of the decision with these rules. One thing that wasn't addressed are the interconnection costs, which are going to keep going up. The rates are going down, but yet, in Western Massachusetts, the interconnection costs are going to keep going up as you add more and more solar, as we've seen from all the studies that are going on now that involve Isonew England. So it seems to me that there should be some kind of patter, in part, for socialization of interconnection costs. Otherwise, you know, if you burden one project, that would provide some benefit that would allow 10 projects. I mean, the one project will never be able to afford it, so the projects will never get built. I would like some explanation on the greenfield detractor. I'm not sure what the policy is other than, gee, we'd rather have solar somewhere other than open fields or where trees are, but where's it going? I mean, there's got to be a goal from here to get to a point in the future. Where's it going in for some land, like say, prime farmland or important farmland that's not being used, and the farmer or the owner is never going to use it as farmland? But yet, they could put some kind of commercial development on it. I'm not sure why, what the point is to penalize solar, which actually will benefit the economy and people's health. But you're going to force the landowner to either keep their land abandoned or do some other kind of use, which wouldn't have some environmental benefits. So it'd be helpful to understand what the rationale is and whether somebody actually weighed the benefits versus the detriments of this kind of restrictive policy in terms of land use. And I don't think that solar should be discriminated against because it is a beneficial use, whereas other ones might not be. So if somebody can just cut down trees and build homes, is that what would be preferred? Because you're going to prohibit solar from being there. Either, it gets economically prohibited because of the detractors or otherwise. And I'm not sure if the ag cap is still in there in terms of the size, but it's for the adder, but it seems to me that having a cap on the size for the adder doesn't make sense either, especially if you're trying to protect or encourage solar and continued agricultural use. You know, a cap on the size of the system really doesn't make good sense from a policy perspective. And finally, one last point. I'm not sure why there's a preference for solar being sited on land where municipalities have taken the time to expressly address solar. I mean, solar is addressed in Section 3 in Massachusetts General Law 40A. And I'm not sure why people should be penalized for trying to put solar where they're legally entitled to put it, just because the municipality feels like it should disobey the law. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Appreciate your comments there. The next person on the floor is Nick Dobreloff, and then on deck is Joseph Pally. So Nick. Nick, if you could raise your hand one more time, I may have, there you go, got it. Thank you. Nick, the floor is yours. Nick, we can't hear you. Mic is unmuted. Okay, it looks like Nick might be having technical difficulties. We'll get back to you. So speaking now is Joseph Pally, and then on deck from there is Pete Fine. Joseph, we will unmute your line, and you have the floor. Joseph? Joseph, I can barely hear you there. Okay, Joseph, well, I'm going to mute you, Joseph. We'll get back to you. The next person up then is Pete Fine, and then we'll try Nick again. Pete Fine, if you could raise your hand. Pete, I don't see your hand raised. Let me try it again. Pete, I don't see your hand raised. So let's go to, back to Nick and see if you're working again, Nick. I'm going to unmute you. Looks like you're self-muted, Nick. I can't unmute you. Hold on. Raise your hand again, Nick. Nick, do I got you?
All this for nothing, I'm afraid. Nick Dobreloff, Sunbug Solar and Seabane.
Thank you, got you.
Mark Sylvia will be testifying on Seabane's behalf today, so I yield my slot to him.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Joseph Pally, we'll try you again, and then on deck after that is Pete Fine. Joseph, you have the floor. Very, very quietly, but if you can.
I speak as loud as I can. How's that?
That, I think, we'll have to do with that, so thank you.
Okay, I guess my first question is, we produced 255 KWH in two arrays that were, went online in early 2018. We were told repeatedly that when the SMART program came in, we would be backdated to when the meter was set or the beginning of the solar program. We received a note from National Grid saying that they had no difficulty backdating for 59 KWH or less, but if it was 69 KWH or more, it was too difficult. Their words, not mine. I'd like to know why the SMART program is not honoring the commitment to go back and grandfather us in where we had 255 KWH. The second question is something called the float. Why does National Grid bill in five days for electricity that they are selling, but I have to wait 120 or more days to receive my compensation for energy that I delivered to them? The third question is on the question of REX. How are REX determined, and how are producers notified of the availability of REX prior to the inception of the SMART program? And the last question is regarding net metering. We were in queue for net metering. We were told net metering was closed. Then we got a letter saying net metering had opened up. We don't know what that means. Does that mean we can go back to the beginning of net metering and grandfather in, or we can elect to go for net metering instead of SMART? There's no direction as to the meaning of you have now become eligible for net metering. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you for those comments. I muted you now, and the next speaker here is Pete Fine, and then on deck is Russ Ane. Pete Fine, if you could raise your hand, please. Pete, I don't see your hand, so we'll go to the next person, Russ Ane. If you could raise your hand, Russ. Thank you. Russ, you have the floor.
Thank you, Eric and Commissioner Woodcock, for this opportunity. The 400-megawatt reviews evolved to not only address how to improve the program through review and update of its rules and compensation levels, but also to ensure that development of solar can continue beyond the program's initial goal of 1,600 megawatts, especially given the rapid pace of applications over the first one and a half years. My comments are primarily going to address the market experience and potential future, and potential regulatory updates regarding the behind-the-meter and small markets under the SMART program. One major accomplishment of the program to date has been its ability to rapidly drive down what I'll call the premium of the solar energy development in Massachusetts when compared to other renewable generation, particularly in the behind-the-meter markets. If you look at the incentive levels and the commercial behind-the-meter markets, they are already less, the base capacity-based incentive level is already less for most commercial customers or anybody over 25 kilowatts than the alternative Class 1 REX value in the market. Residential customers, we will similarly reach a point over the course of the next year in every territory except for EverSource East whereby the incentive level is going to be less than or equal to the Class 1 REX value in the market. This will happen in Unitil before the end of this year, and in the first half of next year for EverSource West and for National Grid. At that point, it will be more economical, other than consideration for the adders, for those customers to simply opt for Class 1 REX than to stay in the SMART program. A reason for that is the considerable overhead costs and the metering costs or complications associated with utility metering. And so I implore a request that the DOER begin now to create a transition off of the SMART program, and specifically one that provides a more assured price for Class 1 REX for the remaining life, for the life of those PV systems or until the RPS goal of 100% is reached. Last year, the RPS Class 1 REX price varied anywhere from $7 to over $40, and there's a huge risk premium, therefore, that's, you know, that must be taken into consideration when determining the expected value of those prices. And really, that market's a quasi-market. It's that both the supply and demand is set by regulation and policy. So what I encourage the DOER to do, if at all possible, is to create a standard offer for until the RPS reaches 100%, you know, someplace in the range of perhaps $20 per REX, which is probably the positive externality equivalent of not producing emissions. And if DOER wanted to, it could actually do a study to better, you know, underscore what that should be, but it's probably somewhere in that price range. And to also make it possible for those customers who opt out of SMART to be able to obtain that standard offer rate for essentially the life of their system for the next 20 to 30 years, without having to go through utility metering, which has added a lot of complications and challenges. Instead, let's just report directly to Neapool GIS, which records the emissions of every generator in the New England territory. For those customers, behind-the-meter customers that remain in SMART, the only reason why they would do For those customers, behind-the-meter customers that remain in SMART, the only reason why they would do so is for the adders. And there are a couple of key things I'd like to call out. One is that the base capacity adder is allowed to go negative, given the way it's calculated today in the regulations. What that does is effectively reduce the value of any adders over time, and that does not occur for standalone systems. It's only for behind-the-meter. So if you could, without consideration of adders, ensure that the capacity-based incentive goes no lower than zero, DOER will still be able to induce the type of development it wants and prevent further bias against behind-the-meter development. The other thing that I would ask is, especially for small, is that the storage adder be made equivalent to the storage adder for systems over 25 kilowatts. They receive, those systems receive the same rate, dollar per kilowatt hour, for proportionally sized energy storage system. But for small systems, they get that same incentive per kilowatt hour for 10 years, whereas for large systems, it's 20 years. And the net present value effect of that is that the larger projects essentially get 1.67 times the amount for that same energy storage per kilowatt hour and versus, versus the small ones, even though the large systems cost about half as much to develop. But from a policy perspective, it seems skewed. One thing that I would request is that DOER consider applying a 1.67 multiplier for the small storage adder to maintain it still at 10 years. But by applying that multiplier, it makes it equivalent to the value of the 20-year incentive. It's only fair. Thank you.
Great, thank you for those comments. Next person to have the floor is Aaron Cullig, and then after that is Claire Chang. So Aaron, the floor. Aaron, it looks like you're self muted. If you could, there you go. Aaron, you have the floor now.
Thanks. We're generally happy with the new SMART regulations. Thank you very much for the DOER. We have two requests. One would be a carve-out for the land use regulations for already disturbed land. We believe that there are certain parcels that, like sand pits, that need to be carved out from the new land use regulations. And the second request would be, we think that the 100% offtake for public entity is very limiting on municipalities. A lot of municipalities already have procured energy in the markets, and therefore, by limiting them to 100% energy, they really can't put solar on a lot of their parcels. So we asked that leases be added to a public entity adder in order to qualify. Thanks.
Great, thank you there, Aaron. So the next presenter is Claire Chang, and then on deck is John Edwards. Claire, I see your hand there, and you're unmuted. You have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Wonderful. So I'm also speaking on behalf of a solar and advocacy group for solar installers. So thank you for the raise to 3,200 megawatts, but it's meaningless if we never get there. And especially since the Brattle Report has made it clear that we need 2 to 4 gigawatts of solar every year, not in 5 years. So this is a pressing need in order to overcome climate change. So SMART was originally enacted to overcome the net metering caps, which the legislature was unable to raise or eliminate. We won't get into all the machinations that occurred there, but it's imperative that the that the program work for the market segment of the residential under 25 market and also the 25 to 500 KW segment. And I agree with Russ Ane's comments about all of the adders and also the compensation rates for under 25. The one that I would add is that trackers, dual-access trackers, there needs to be an adder for the under 25 marketplace for using trackers which give you much higher production values. Then the next comment is about behind-the-meter 25 to 500 KW. The compensation rate currently is at 150 and 125%. Because that market size was basically eliminated from the first round of applications due to the rush in the first week, there needs to be an increase because we're at Block 9 in several of the utilities to 200% for 25 KW to 250, and then to 175% for 250 to 500 KW. This is to get the Block 9 rate back to approximately near the Block 1 value to give that system size at least a running start and meet the original mandate to overcome the net metering caps and to give behind-the-meter systems their nearly full retail value of net metering. The, there is an issue, though. The systems that are in Block 1 through 8, they already have the lower compensation. I'm not sure how to address those equity issues. I'm sure DOER will find a mechanism to figure that out, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Great, thank you for those comments. John Edwards, if you could please raise your hand, you'll be the next presenter. And then on deck is David Gabby. John Edwards, if you could please raise your hand. Okay, then I'll go to David Gabby presenting. If you could please raise your hand, and Jeremy McDermott, if you could be on deck there. David Gabby, if you could please raise your hand. Okay, great. We will go to Jeremy then. Jeremy McDermott, if you could please raise your hand. Thank you. Jeremy, if you could, you're self muted. If you could unmute your phone. Great, Jeremy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Eric, and good morning. I'm Jeremy McDermott from the Northeast Clean Energy Council. And at first, we appreciate the doubling of the commitment of the SMART program by adding 1,600 megawatts. It will be helpful. And as, as indicated, we will plan to submit written comments in collaboration with several other organizations today. Like just a couple of key concerns and offer some improvements to the emergency regs to make the program work more smoothly. We appreciate the challenge of having to draw a dividing line between the original and the post-400-megawatt review sort of land use rules. But we would urge DOER to change the grandfathering provisions in at least two critical ways. The first is that any new restrictions on land use should start for projects in newly established capacity blocks. That will avoid penalizing projects that are suffering delays that are outside of a developer's control. And then the second tariff conditions should have, under normal conditions, have received an ISA by the date of the publication of the emergency regs, should be grandfathered to avoid penalizing mature projects that have been hamstrung by the current application and, and study backlogs. The second piece I wanted to flag is related to the, the base compensation rates. And for a number of reasons, the, the base compensation rates as, as published are not adequate to support development going forward. And as a result, we recommend that DOER revisit the setting of base compensation rates in a way that takes into account the changes in the industry, including interconnection costs and federal tax and tariff policies that have, that have made the development challenging. Only, I think going forward, we would urge DOER to continue to facilitate smooth transitions in the solar policy of the Commonwealth and to avoid gaps in program continuity that would create uncertainty in the marketplace and challenges for the industry. Thank you again for the opportunity, and we look forward to filing written comments.
Thank you for those comments. The next person to present is Ryan Young. Ryan, if you could, please raise your hand, and then after that is Jeremy Carp. Ryan, got you. Ryan, you're self muted. If you could unmute yourself. Great.
Is that better? Good morning.
That's better. You have the floor.
Good morning. Thank you, everybody, and thanks to Commissioner Woodcock. I'm just speaking just briefly, just a couple of points on behalf of CVE North America. First, we obviously support the expansion, and we really appreciate and support the pollinator adder, so thank you for that. Like some others have said, the, the land use restrictions are very concerning. Both the 50% rule and the grandfathering language, given the backlog and interconnection queue. And one thing we'd like to understand better is that, our understanding is that the data that is being used to, that was created not to be used on a parcel-level scale, but it seems like that's the way it's going to be applied in the SMART regulations. So we'd like some DOER to look into that a little bit. And we have several parcel projects that we've been working on for many years and have a significant financial investment in. And unfortunately, you know, I wish more landowners would have been able to. I doubt many are on the call today to comment, but I know they are equally invested and concerned about the projects that, that will be canceled by the, that already are canceled by the emergency regulations. So I hope there's some relief on the land use restrictions. In regard to community solar, in regard to, or sorry, in order to secure financing, we'd like some more clarity on the possible suspensions or revocation of the SOQ if a project fails to be 90% allocated by December 1st. So we're looking forward to hearing some more feedback on that. And just real quick, the last point. We understand that DOER may not give SOQs until after the TPU rules on the tariff, and we hope that DOER will consider issuing SOQs for the already established blocks in EverSource East that are, I believe, 338. That will be very helpful in allowing us to continue to move forward with the projects already invested in. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great, Ryan, thank you for those comments there. Next speaking is Jeremy Carp, and then on deck is Sarah Breslin. Jeremy, I see you. Jeremy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to testify. I think generally, there are a lot of really positive changes in these proposed emergency regulations, but I did want to raise a few concerns that have jumped out to me. The first is in regard to the requirement of 500-kilowatt AC in larger projects to include energy storage systems. I think it's a great idea and goal, but in practice, a mature project that is nearly, may not have local permits, but has its ISA should be grandfathered in under the old, as well as it doesn't take into account how municipalities and local officials feel about solar, I mean, batteries. Not everyone is really totally comfortable with them. And so I think there should be a nuance to allow for projects to be able to move forward in those municipalities for a project that would otherwise have been approved, had it not had storage, and it would be opposed if it has storage added. Secondly, I want to go back to what several other commenters have said about the base compensation rates. The idea of the SMART program was that it was going to be a five-year program, and it was going to take significant time to reach those later blocks in every territory except for EverSource East. That did not happen. They were filled within a year. And so the cost reductions that were expected just haven't happened, and that's really impaired the economics and financial viability of projects. So I, I would hope that there would be some ability to go back and address the base rates. But if that's not possible, the emphasis on not building on greenfield or previously undeveloped land. One solution could be increasing the solar canopy adder and making it easier to add floating solar. Both are secondary uses to land. And, but unfortunately, especially for the canopy adder, once you get to Blocks 4 and beyond in National Grid and EverSource West, they are no longer really economical. And so a really good way for the state to be able to reach its goals, if it's, there's going to be restrictions on the ability to build on greenfields and undeveloped land, would be further incentivizing alternative locations for solar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy, for those comments. Sarah Breslin, if you could please raise your hand, you'll have the floor. And then next after that is Eli Goldman. You're on deck. Sarah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, everybody. Thank you to the department for holding this stakeholder session. I'm Sarah Breslin from NG North America. Yesterday, I was listening to an energy and environment reporter on the radio discuss the various renewable energy targets and programs in the Commonwealth, and he referred to the SMART program as a solar program, which, of course, it is. But from NG's perspective, the program has done more for the development of battery energy storage in the Commonwealth than any other program or initiative, and could very well be one of the country's most successful energy storage programs. NG is currently developing over 50 megawatts of energy storage in Massachusetts through the SMART program alone, and we strongly support the department's decision to increase the program to 3,200 megawatts, as well as requiring that PV projects over 500 kilowatts be paired with energy storage systems. However, I would like to address two items that will negatively impact NG's investment. Land use restrictions and grandfathering. The new land use restrictions that appear to render ineligible a large part of the state's territory for construction under the SMART program of ground-mounted solar will also effectively prevent the continued development of energy storage at this pace under the SMART program. Since almost 90% of the energy storage capacity development developed under the SMART program has been paired with ground-mounted projects, frustrating the development of these projects will greatly diminish the prospects for further deploying storage. The department could use common sense regulatory tools, like permitting waivers from new habitat restrictions where GIS layer is inaccurate, or where it is determined that a project can move forward with no adverse impact to the species or habitat at issue. At the very least, a stakeholder technical session to discuss the new land use restrictions and mapping technology would be a reasonable path forward. Proper grandfathering is critical, and NG believes that the current grandfathering language does not appropriately consider the investments already made in the Commonwealth. Because storage projects take years and a significant investment to fully develop, common sense grandfathering provisions will leave many invested, will be many investments stranded, which will send a chill through the investment community. So NG suggests the department consider applying new habitat restrictions beginning at Block 9, and also due to multi-year interconnection bottlenecks and other delays largely unattributable to industry participants, grandfathering provisions could be extended to projects that can demonstrate they have obtained site control prior to the publication date and demonstrate substantial investment in permitting prior to the October 15th, 2020 deadline. Thanks again for the opportunity to comment.
Great, thank you. Next person is Eli Goldman. If you could raise your hand, please. And on deck after that is Ryan Rego. Eli, if you could, please raise your hand. Eli, if you could please raise your hand. Okay, we'll go to Ryan Rego. Ryan, if you could please raise your hand. And then on deck after that is Haskell Whirlin. Ryan, if you could raise your hand there. Ryan, I don't see your hand. If you could, please raise that. Okay, great. We'll go to Haskell Whirlin then, and on deck then is Scott Webster. Haskell, if you could please raise your hand. Thank you. I see that. Oh, you just put it down. Thank you.
Hi, Eric. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and Commissioner Woodcock for holding this hearing. And we really do appreciate at Solar Design, the efforts you've made to improve the SMART program. However, as my colleague Claire Chang has once said, you gave However, as my colleague Claire Chang has once said, you gave us a really fancy Lamborghini with no gas. We need to have the program improved to make it financially viable for a lot of the projects, especially in the smaller sector where we're seeing projects go negative, as Russ Aini earlier mentioned. So that to make it financially viable to go forward, increasing the base compensation rates by a factor of 200% for the 25 to 250 and 175% to 250 or 500 would be greatly helpful. We're working a lot on behind-the-meter systems with battery storage. But in some situations in the built environment, these projects have been designed years ago and have no space physically to put the storage. And I think that for behind-the-meter systems, up to a megawatt should be allowed to opt into a battery system and get the adder, but not be required to. Again, citing the fire safety issues that we're coming up against in some of the cities. This would be requiring us to do a good cause exemption letter on every one of these projects. And we really don't want to see DOER having to deal with many, many good cause exemptions. In terms of COVID and the effects of COVID, we're seeing more requirements for the construction workers and for making it more expensive to go into home to do installation work. And we think that the costs that were determined three years ago for the SMART program should be reexamined and reset to reflect the current realities. We could be adding a lot of employment very quickly. We at one point had over 15,000 employees in Massachusetts in the solar sector, and we're down to less than half of that now. And at least 80% of the installers are working on smaller systems. So I think that is an area where the state can get a lot of traction for employment. And I want to thank you for the work you're doing and look forward to seeing some improvements. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. The next presenter is Scott Webster. Scott, if you could please raise your hand. And then on deck after that is Richard Pypek. Scott Webster, if you could please raise your hand. Scott, I don't see your hand. If you could please raise it. Okay, I'll go to Richard Pypek. And then on deck is John Mack. Richard, if you could please raise your hand. Richard, I don't see your hand. If you could please raise it. Okay, we'll go to John Mack then. And then on deck is Richard Hall. John Mack, if you could please raise your hand. John, I can't see your hand. If you could please raise it. Okay, we'll go to Richard Hall then. And on deck is Mark Sylvia. Richard Hall, thank you. I see you. Great, Richard, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you for letting us make comments on the new regulations. Briefly, a couple of things that we noticed was, one, on the agricultural side of things, there's still a limit to how much you can put on agricultural land. And it might be something which was a limit of 200. And it may be something to look at is farm buildings without putting it actually on ground-mounted units. Farms have a lot of farm, farm buildings. And being able to utilize the roofs would be very helpful for farmers. Secondly, there's a timing issue. For Western Mass, obviously, the emergency regulations are in place. But as it has to go through the DPU for the electricity companies to actually revise their tariffs, it would be interesting to know what sort of timeframe this is going to take. As I think there's a lot of projects in Western Mass that would then go on to the waiting list until such time as the DPU moves through their process. And it may be helpful to have an updated list of the projects, the submitted applications and where they are of the opening of the portal. So everyone knows exactly what's in process. Thank you very much for allowing us to make these comments today.
Thank you for those comments there. Next presenter is Mark Sylvia. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. And then on deck is Greg Geller. Mark, if you could please raise your hand again. Great, thank you. And Mark, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Director Steltzer, to you, the department and the commissioner, for the opportunity for all of us to testify today. My name is Mark Sylvia, and I'm the president of the Solar Energy Business Association of New England and the chief of staff at Blue Age Solar. First, we wanted to begin by thanking the Baker administration and DOER for your swift action taken to provide for the statement of qualification extension in response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. It was very meaningful. We also thank DOER for doubling the capacity of the SMART program to 3,200 megawatts, all while maintaining a collaborative approach to these SMART improvements. What I want to talk about today is three things. First, beginning with base compensation rates. Pent-up demand for solar caused the initial SMART capacity blocks to fill immediately following several program implementation delays. The rush of projects that we're all familiar with created a significant backlog. And without safeguards and compensation rate improvements, we anticipate the backlog of projects to persist once the new capacity blocks are opened up. Further, interconnection costs, as some of my colleagues have already testified to, are dramatically increasing, burdening new projects with hefty upgrade costs despite the benefits that these projects are providing to customers and to grid reliability. In the past, CBAIN and other solar associations have supported decreasing levels of incentives for projects over time. But the current decline for base compensation rates complicate solar investment. Despite the cost of solar dramatically decreasing over the last decade, installations and material costs have not. And despite these challenges, the industry shows promising signs of recovery. But without base compensation rates adequately affecting economic realities, this growth will be limited. Striking a balanced approach, CBAIN believes enabling an independent third-party firm to analyze and assess economic realities, forecasts, and costs in order to establish revised base compensation rates is in order. A third-party review would alleviate unintended consequences that disincentivize solar development and allow for more sustainable declining incentive levels. Next, I'd like to touch base on a potential multiplier for small energy storage systems. My colleague Russ Aini mentioned it further. As you know, there exists a disparity between 10-year NPV of storage for small systems and the 20-year NPV for systems over 25 KW. When comparing the net present value of these two incentive streams, it's clear that the NPV of the 20-year income stream is at least 1.6 times greater than the 10-year incentive. DOER should consider increasing the size of the multiplier required to make the 10- and 20-year NPV equivalent. Finally, I'd like to highlight that CBAIN and its members stand at the ready to assist in accomplishing the governor's climate goals. The expansion of SMART is another step in the right direction for the Commonwealth. We recognize there's more to do and look forward to continuing the dialogue to achieve those long-term climate goals. We look forward to filing comprehensive comments on behalf of our members related to the issues I just mentioned, as well as our concerns regarding the new land use restrictions and the grandfathering process. We also look forward to signing on to the Joint Solar Coalition comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. The next person to speak is Greg Geller. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. And on deck after that is Ed Broland. Greg, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for all the hard work from DOER that's gone into the 400-megawatt review and DOER's willingness to listen to stakeholder feedback. Two areas for comment today from ANL. First, we strongly support the proposed 20% carve-out for projects that are greater than 25 KW and less than 500 KW. In the case of behind-the-meter solar plus storage in the size range, participation's been extremely minimal to date. And this carve-out should stimulate more participation from CNI end-use customers. However, the economics of projects these sizes are clearly challenging, and they won't get any better now that we are in lower-priced blocks. Therefore, we'd recommend increasing the eligibility requirement for the carve-out to 750 KW. EPC costs are fairly similar, whether a project is 500 KW or 750 KW. And so the economics of 750 KW project could induce a customer to participate in a manner not possible for a 500 KW project. If one of the objectives of the 400-megawatt review is to increase behind-the-meter participation, and we know that there are end-use customers that have the space for 750 KW and could achieve greater bill savings and revenues at that level, it seems logical to extend the eligibility to that size of project. These bill savings and revenue streams are needed more than ever for businesses and organizations across the Commonwealth. Second, we strongly support a 2% decrease for behind-the-meter projects instead of a 4% decrease. But it urged DOER to make it available to the next tranche in EverSource East. Again, there's been limited participation in EverSource East in these higher-priced blocks to date. And there's clearly a challenge in economics where there are smaller projects in that service territory and less KW to spread EPC costs. By subjecting projects in that territory to a 4% decrease each tranche, while also adding a host of new requirements, will only make it more difficult for projects to pencil in that territory. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We look forward to submitting written comments.
Thank you for those comments. Next up is Ed Broland. I see your raised hand. Thank you. And then on deck after that is Patrick Jackson. Ed Broland, the floor is yours.
Good morning. My name is Ed Broland. I'm CEC's VP of Policy. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comments. CEC has grave concerns over the future of solar development in Massachusetts with the citing criteria as written. We believe that BioMap 2, which was never designed to be used as a regulatory tool, is an inappropriate mechanism to shape solar land use regulations and that DOER should instead take an approach based on natural capital and ecosystem services. But I want to focus today on the grandfathering under the transition project exception. Whatever changes are ultimately decided through this process, it's critical that they're not applied retroactively to projects in which developers have expended significant time, effort, and capital and on which Massachusetts residents are counting to provide much-needed income. As an example, CEC has a project in southeastern Massachusetts on which we've been working since 2015. It's been fully permitted by the town since 2016. The project's property is entirely within critical natural landscape, despite being a developed neighborhood surrounded by residences and roads. CEC has spent approximately $250,000 over five years on this project, which was forced into a group study process, a process that critically has no time requirement placed on the utility. Even worse, in order to avoid going into a cluster study, which would have resulted in an additional six-month delay, CEC had to downsize the project. There's no guarantee that the study will be completed by the TPE's October 15th deadline. The project's landowner is approaching retirement, and the couple's husband has terminal cancer. The $60,000 a year that CEC will pay the family is critical to her having some semblance of a decent life in retirement. And all of that is at risk in the event that there are further delays completely beyond CEC's control. The TPE should provide relief for any mature project for the duration of any utility-caused delays, and not just through October 15th. Finally, in addition to providing sufficient time, the TPE should also provide equal weight to permitting and ISAs. As written, the TPE requires that a project must have had all of its permits approved before the publication date and then provides its additional six months for the approval of the ISA. Why this assumption of the order of development activity? As an example, we have a project that has its ISA but does not yet have fully-approved permits because we've been working collaboratively with the town and several residents to arrange the necessary lines in a way that the town wishes. The absence of approved permits in this case isn't a deficiency or a lack of maturity. It's emblematic of a developer who's serious about working to ensure that their project serves the community. In closing, CEC submits that DOER should modify the TPE to not only replace the arbitrary six months with an extension for the duration of utility-caused delays, but also to allow for any project that had demonstrated site control and either an executed ISA or all necessary government permits and approvals prior to the publication date to qualify for the exception. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for those comments. Next up are actually two people from Sunraise. So Patrick or Rebecca, whoever's speaking on behalf of your organization, if you could please raise your hand. Great, I see Rebecca. Thank you. Then after that is Andy Finton. Rebecca, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. My name is Rebecca Perkins-Coggin. I'm General Counsel of Sunraise Investments, based out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today and give feedback on the regulations that have been promulgated by DOER. We appreciate the expansion of the SMART program, and we just hope that that expansion is able to be used, given the strict and narrow grandfathering that was provided on restricted land use areas. We wish to raise three main points today on the revised 400-megawatt review rules. First, we'll address grandfathering on restricted land uses. Second, and thirdly, briefly, we'll address the greenfield subtractor and the SQ administration. First, on grandfathering, Sunraise has a portfolio of projects in Massachusetts that has worked tirelessly on for over two years. Unfortunately, six of these projects are on lands that are subject to natural heritage restrictions. Fortunately, this means that we've been working through the process with natural heritage, and those lands require that for every acre we disturb, we place 1.5 acres in permanent conservation restriction. Those projects under the new regulations are now dead, despite their advanced stage of maturity, given that the land use is prohibited by the new regulations. We are here today to ask you to save these projects, like so many others like them across the Commonwealth, because these projects alone would have placed over 350 acres of priority habitat into permanent conservation, and they still can. Reasonable grandfathering of projects with priority habitat concerns like ours, which have been in development for well over 18 months and have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in them, is good for the Commonwealth for so many reasons. At a time when jobs, tax revenue, and certainty is needed more than ever, emergency regulations with very narrow grandfathering creates risk not only for further development by the solar community, but by other industries as well, if these are the kind of sudden rule change the Baker administration's comfortable with. Our ask is simple and, in our view, reasonable. Expand the existing exception under 225 CMR 2005 E1C to apply to projects which have site control as of the publication date and which have submitted their interconnection application at least six months prior to the publication date. As far as our second and third points, we just want to address the greenfield subtractor briefly. It is a blunt tool, in our view, for a very nuanced problem. Towns have each spent time crafting zoning and conservation plans. And so a payment-in-lieu program, which allowed us to ride revenue to the towns, would ensure that the greenfield protected was of conservation value. Secondly, SQ should continue to be issued on a rolling base. To compound the extreme economic circumstances of COVID-19, the DOER should be supporting projects that have reached a certain maturity, not holding them up at this stage. We will submit more comprehensive comments in written form. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Andy Finton to comment. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. And then I understand Lucy Bullock Seeger is no longer presenting. So next on deck after that is David Gall. Andy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks for the opportunity to provide comments today. And thank you for your efforts to enhance the SMART program. My name is Andy Finton. I'm the Landscape Conservation Director for the Nature Conservancy in Massachusetts. The Conservancy supports the Commonwealth's goals to increase the supply of renewable energy to achieve our carbon emission reduction targets. We also support DOER's goal to cite We also support D O E R's goal to site solar facilities in locations that minimize the impact to natural resources. As an incentive program, SMART needs to provide a framework that allows for straightforward implementation and that is supported by industry, conservation, municipalities, landowners, farm and forestry sectors and other stakeholders. The first round of SMART resulted in over 70% of the capacity being developed or planned on undeveloped land, largely forests. This has created conflict and concern from the public. And this conflict could significantly reduce the ability to develop solar energy capacity in Massachusetts going forward. We're very pleased that D O E R used a science-based process to define areas ineligible for incentives and avoid conversion and fragmentation of the state's most important habitat. BioMap 2, which the Conservancy helped create, is a proactive planning tool, identifying important habitats statewide at multiple scales. It's critical to find feasible solutions to conserve these critical areas while at the same time accelerating our state's renewable energy capacity. We're also concerned that the public entity projects are classified as category one, which eliminates the application of habitat data to project eligibility. We recognize the need to develop projects that supply renewable energy to local communities. But we're concerned that this section, as written, could circumvent the land use guidelines and result in unintended consequences of conversion of important habitats. We look forward to working with D O E R going forward and we will submit written comments accordingly. Thanks very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. The next presenter is David Gahl. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. And then on deck after that is Dan Watson. David, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Director Seltzer. Good morning. My name is David Gahl from the Solar Energy Industries Association. CEA appreciates the expansion of the SMART program to 3,200 megawatts. And as noted by my other colleagues, we're working on filing joint industry comments, highlighting the major issues that need reconsideration. While the SMART regulations have a number of smart, number of positive provisions and several provisions will result in significant harm to specific sectors of the solar industry and should be revisited. I'm going to limit my remarks today to the economic harm caused by the new land use restrictions. And then two, I'd like to talk a little bit about the potential delay with the issue issuance of statements of qualifications. And I think it's important also to keep in mind sort of the backdrop and the economic reality facing the solar industry at this moment. As as many of the firms can attest to on the on the phone today, permitting challenges, supply chain delays, tightening of tax equity markets and reduced homeowner and community solar subscriber demand are all placing tremendous pressure on the industry. Through June of 2020, CEA projects the Massachusetts solar industry will employ only 3,921 people rather than the 8,205 that were originally forecast for the period. That's a loss of more than 4,000 jobs. As a result, we have to look at the SMART regulations through the lens of encouraging economic recovery and keeping people work working. CEA, however, argues that some of the provisions in the new regulations will have the opposite effect. Most notably, the new land use regulations. The three new GIS layers, priority habitat, core habitat and critical natural landscapes are added to the ineligible land use category. Based on our preliminary analysis and working with the Coalition for Community Solar Access, CEA has identified at least 477 megawatts worth of projects that would not move forward based on these regulations. That results in more than 1,500 lost jobs and puts more than $731 million of investment at risk. That's those are dollars that should have been invested in the Massachusetts economy. And we also believe this is a conservative estimate. It's based on some limited reporting from our member companies. And as our analysis continues, we expect these numbers to increase. So our recommendation here is to encourage D O E R to reconsider the land use restrictions and in particular, remove the critical natural landscapes layer from the list of ineligible land types. The last issue I want to address is just the issue of the issuance of SOQs. We understand that the department only intends to issue SOQs after the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities has approved the revised tariffs to expand the program. Once again, this delay would exacerbate the state's economic problems and hurt the industry. And every effort should be made to expedite the issuance of SOQs. And given the fragile state of the industry at the moment and the urgent need to avoid further job loss, we request that D O E R find a way to issue the SOQs immediately, such as issuing a statement on a conditional nature, recognizing that the DPU has to issue a formal order approving the tariffs. And also to involve the industry stakeholders in the tariff preparation process as soon as possible so we can avoid a protracted and lengthy process of the DPU over tariff provisions. Thanks for the opportunity to make these comments today. We look forward to submitting written comments with our colleagues and happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Next commenter is Dan Watson. If you could please, thank you. See your hand there. Then after that on deck is Liz Argo. Dan, the floor. Dan, you're self muted. If you could unmute yourself. Dan, you're still self muted. If you could unmute yourself. Okay, Dan, there you go. You have the floor now. Yes.
All right. Sorry about that. So I would like to thank the department for the opportunity to provide comments this morning. Largely, I want to echo what my industry colleagues have already proposed regarding the land use regulations and the grandfathering clauses that should be implemented to effectively implement these new regulations. And obviously, Loadstar Energy, we are an experienced developer. And while we recognize the department has allowed a six month grace period for certain projects that had received their non ministerial permits prior to the implementation of the citing regulations on April 15. We'd like to highlight specifically that that's not reflective of the development process. For most developers, we have a number of projects that in Ever Source East territory particularly, where we initially submitted interconnection applications more than a year ago and due to a number of delays, cluster studies, dynamic studies, whatever they are. These projects have been put on hold, not just through in the ISA process, but in the permitting process. And we support the industry's comments that the regulations should allow for a grandfathering of any project that should have had an ISA prior to April 15, which would put the deadline for an interconnection application prior to October 15. We think that's a reasonable regulation if the department is going to continue with its BioMap 2 GIS usage and its citing regulations. Second, we think that these regulations should not apply through for any project that qualifies for blocks one through eight. This is changing the game in the middle of a development cycle. We have spent more than $50,000 on a project that is probably likely to qualify for an original program block. And changing the rules is you're changing the rules in the fourth quarter now. And we think that's that's really detrimental to a number of developers, including Loadstar. And we encourage the department to consider the proposals and the written proposals that a number of our industry colleagues will provide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next commenter is Liz Argo. If you could please raise your hand. And then on deck after that is Heidi Ritchie. Liz Argo, if you could please raise your hand. Liz, I don't see your hand. If you could please raise your hand. Okay, we'll go on to Heidi Ritchie. If you could please raise your hand. And then Marcia Hart is on deck after that. Heidi, I see you. You are unmuted. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Heidi Ritchie, Assistant Director of Advocacy at Mass Audubon. I very much appreciate D O E R's efforts to revise the regulations to address land use concerns and the conflicts that Andy mentioned. And for this opportunity to comment, we will also submit written comments. I support the Nature Conservancy's comments entirely and just add a few additional points. So first of all, I think it's really important for D O E R to establish a broader plan for where we're headed with solar. We know based on the Brattle Group report and the roadmap to 2050 that there is a need to rapidly develop a large capacity of solar. And Mass Audubon supports that. But it needs to be done in a way that also integrates with other aspects of the Commonwealth's planning for addressing climate change, both in terms of resiliency for people and nature and infrastructure, as well as in regards to mitigation. So for example, the BioMap is a planning document that's based on science and that identifies the lands that are most important to remain undeveloped for ecological resiliency to climate change. The Net Zero Roadmap, you know, we're never going to get to zero actual emissions. So there's a role for land to play in sequestering carbon. We need to continue that. People have worked very hard over the last few decades to reduce the rate of residential sprawl. And Mass Audubon in our losing ground land use series has found that the rate of development has gone down to about 13 acres a day. But what we're seeing now is that solar ground mounted solar arrays are about a quarter of all new development. So there's a real need to integrate with the state's shim cap and armat with roadmap and with other state planning. And then finally, I just want to note that we think there's a need to really analyze what the barriers are and the potential capacity to development of solar within existing developments. So rooftops, parking lots, existing large landscaped areas of grass at office parks and the like. And, you know, what are both administrative and the economic barriers? And then adjust the program to have more incentive towards that. We think that will also be more efficient for generating power closer to where the demand is, leaving pressure on the grid. And we do not want to see a lot of land impacts from extending the grid as well as the solar arrays themselves. So thank you, and we will submit written comments.
Thank you. The next commenter is Marcia Hart. Marcia, if you could please raise your hand. Thank you. And then on deck is Kristen Sykes. Marcia, the floor is yours.
I am both concerned about habitat and our forests and what they do to contribute to climate change issues, but also about the development of solar as being extremely needed. So it seems like the land use restrictions are problematic and they require a closer look so that there isn't unnecessary prevention of appropriate properties being used. And it doesn't sound like that mix has been reached yet. And also, it doesn't seem as though the grandfathering portion has reached the right balance either. And it's a real mistake to disincentivize groups that have been working for a long time and put time, money and and made commitments to property owners to have projects go forward and then have them regulated out of the possibilities that could have existed. So I would ask you to look at those two things more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Sykes, you're next up. Thank you. I see your hand. And then on deck from there is Robin Duda. Kristen, the floor is yours.
Great. Good morning. My name is Kristen Sykes and I'm Director of Southern New England Conservation Projects and Partnerships for the Appalachian Mountain Club. I'm also on the board and the Chair of the Policy Committee for the Massachusetts Land Trust Coalition. Thank you, Eric and Commissioner Woodcock, for the opportunity to provide comments on the SMART emergency regulations. The AMC will also be submitting written comments. Thank you, D U E R, for protecting the forest and wildlands in BioMap 2. The citizens of our Commonwealth have been shocked by the vast clearing of forests under the earlier version of SMART. We never expected renewable energy to destroy the most precious natural resource in our state. We never expected to subsidize this destruction through our electricity bills and forests sequester carbon, our homes to birds and animals, and give us clean water. The MassGov website says to mitigate climate change, quote, "It all starts with keeping forests as forests." Where should solar go? According to a report by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, the total rooftop area suitable for solar deployment in Massachusetts is over 40,000 acres. We have five additional recommendations on the SMART regulations or emergency regulations. One, the 2.5 greenfield subtractor is inadequate and should be at least five times its current level. Two, for any greenfield development, mass wildlife, mass DEP and a Massachusetts Endangered Species Act review should be brought on early in the project, not at the 11th hour. Three, the greenfield subtractor should be applied to the entire footprint of the site, not just the square footage of the solar panels. Four, solar developments that provide electricity to public entities should be subject to BioMap 2 restrictions, designated as category two land and not qualify as category one land. Five, the Baker Administration should work with the State House to pass rooftop solar bills like S 1957 and S 1995, which would require solar panels to be installed on new residential and commercial buildings and on buildings owned or operated by the state. Massachusetts should not sacrifice its precious natural resources for solar, and it doesn't have to. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for all the tremendous work that D O E R has put into this.
Thank you. Robin Duda, you are next up. I see your hand. Thank you. And then on deck is Brian Campbell. Robin, unfortunately, with your pen, there is a the way you dialed in, you need a pen. We'll come back to you. I'm unable to unmute you. So if you could dial back in and then other means, we'll we'll get back to you. I see you there, though. So next up is Brian Campbell. Brian Campbell, if you could please raise your hand. Brian, if you could please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see you there. We'll go to, next is Emily Cospar. If you could please raise your hand. And then on deck is James Feinstein. Emily, if you could raise your hand, please. Emily, I can't see your hand. If you could please raise it. Got you now. Thank you. Emily, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I'm commenting today on behalf of Ambien, which is a community solar service provider with extensive experience in community shared solar in Massachusetts as well as New York State. We appreciate the opportunity to comment today. We've got several operational concerns that we feel warrant attention from a legislative standpoint to their significant impact on the operation of CSS sites in the Commonwealth. We have a growing portfolio of currently live ABC sites, which we feel puts us in a unique place to comment. We've got four main issues we'd like to bring to everyone's attention today. The first is the inability to bank AUBCs at the host meter under the SMART program. We acknowledge that this is a DPU jurisdiction item, strictly speaking. However, we feel that it is a harmful and obstructive policy and we would like it to be considered for change as part of these draft regulations. Banking AUBCs at the host meter is technically allowed for in the tariff under certain conditions. And we would like to make note that developers are unable to recoup lost revenue due to undersubscription of CSS sites or even overallocation of community shared solar subscribers in the event that there is drop off, which places me in the event that there is drop off, which places me and them at a significant advantage and leads to my second point, which is the need to increase the frequency of allocation changes for AUBC sites. This rule has a disproportionate impact on consumers in the Commonwealth who wish to participate in CSS. Produced opportunities to enter and exit CSS programs are limited by the two-time allocation change rule currently in place per year in the tariff. Again, we acknowledge this is a strictly speaking DPU jurisdiction item, but we feel that it causes significant financial harm and warrants further consideration. Thirdly, we are seeking more clarity and explicit guidance on how CCAs will overlay with the CSS offering as provided in the draft regulations. We have significant experience with CCAs in New York State and would strongly encourage everyone to review those proceedings in New York for further detail. However, we would like more information explicitly laid out in the SMART regulations prior to promulgation. And finally, we are advocating for better and more data availability from utilities regarding administration of AUBC sites, specifically regarding availability of the host meter invoice, access to historical consumption data for subscribers, and where possible, web-based interface over EDI exchange. Delay or inaccessibility of these items causes significant problems for billing for CSS arrangements and therefore financial harm for developers and subscribers. Again, we acknowledge that some of these items may be out of scope. We appreciate the opportunity to comment and would also appreciate a technical conference to discuss these items specifically, if at all possible. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. What we'll do right now is, well, I understand, Robin, Duda, your, yours is now working, so we'll go to Robin. And then I also understand that Representative Sabadosa is on, and then we'll go to Representative Sabadosa and then go to James Feinstein. So apologies for the, uh, the change order here. But, uh, Robin, we'll go to you for the floor.
Thank you, Eric. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Robin Duda with SunPower. We'll be filing more extensive, uh, written comments, but I just want to hit a few key points. First of all, thank you to D O E R and Renewables Team for the SMART expansion to 3,200 megawatts. That's a, uh, obviously a very big deal and, and we appreciate it. SunPower entered the Massachusetts market because of the SMART program, so we'd like to see it as strong as possible. We are not taking a position on the land use restrictions in the emergency regulations. And I'll just note if those restrictions or similar ones are going to be in place, it makes it all the more important for behind the meter and onsite systems to be able to be deployed. As has been said by other commenters, the economics for solar are completely different today than they were at the launch of the SMART program. And while the program was being contemplated, you know, we have a lower ITC, we have much higher interconnection costs. And because of COVID, we're now seeing much higher financing costs. Uh, and then when you have rooftop systems that now are requiring AC modules for residential and commercial, as well as higher steel costs for canopy systems, you know, we're just, we're just seeing fundamentally different project economics. We also asked that the alternate unbilled credit be extended to behind the meter systems to give them more access for systems up to five megawatts. And then briefly on storage, SunPower urges D O E R to lift the storage mandate. We ask that you enhance, uh, storage incentives in order to benefit customers. Instead of mandating it, that can create a higher cost to the customer and actually scuttle deals because of the higher cost that, that doesn't have a benefit. And then lastly, and this is mostly because of the COVID, post-COVID life, the world can be lead, leading. We asked that the ESU reservation periods be extended to be 18 months as a base period, and then for public projects to be 24 months, because they have to go through not just the regular development time, but also the reservation period needs to take into account the interconnection study, since these projects can apply to SMART sooner. As I said, we'll be submitting our own written comments that go into all this in more detail. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. So next up is Representative Sabadosa. If you could please raise your hand. Catherine, I believe you might be representing the Representative's office, so I'll unmute you. Thank you. I see Representative Sabadosa, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? All right.
We can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry that I am not familiar with this technology. So good morning. My name is Lindsay Sabadosa, and I'm the State Representative for the First Hampshire District, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak today. And I just want to underline how grateful I am for the work that D O R, D O E R has been doing on these SMART regulations. I know that you have traversed the state and got feedback from many entities. And I, I know that you have come to my district as well, for which I am grateful. I will be brief and I will submit much longer written comments, but I did want to say that first of all, I, I do appreciate that it looks like D O E R is really truly trying to advance and promote solar power developments in the state while also proactively ensuring protections for a wide range of sensitive habitats. That was something that was very important to me in my comments that I had submitted previously. And I'm really grateful for the use of the online mapping tool. It not only shows which parcels are ineligible for SMART when they fall within the priority habitat and biomap two polygons, but also the parcels that overlap priority habitat and biomap two polygons, which are ineligible for SMART if 50% or more of the parcel is classified as prehab or biomap two. I think the, my, my sole issue, though, is I, I still think that the greenfield subtractor is too low. It's, uh, at least to my read 2.5, and I think that we could have raised that a little bit. So I will be including that in my comments. And I thank you very much again for allowing me to speak today.
Great, thank you. Next up is James Feinstein. I see you. If you could raise your hand again, James. And then after that will be Elon Gutierrez. James, if you could please raise your hand. James, it looks like it's getting raised and then unraised. If you could raise your hand one more time. Same, same issue there. Thank you, James. Hold on there. And then James, if you could unmute your phone, you're self muted. Try it one more time, James. Okay, James, there it is.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep, gotcha.
Commissioner Woodcock and the D O E R staff, thank you for providing the opportunity to testify as part of the SMART emergency rulemaking process. My name is James Feinstein, and I am the Policy Manager for Arcadia. Arcadia is the first nationwide digital energy services platform and the market leader in managing residential community solar subscriptions. We currently have more than 400,000 customers spread across all 50 states, including more than 16,000 in Massachusetts. Our experience shows that the customer experience is better when they can enjoy the benefits of a community solar subscription without long-term contracts or early termination fees. As the SMART rules are written, however, that is not feasible for Massachusetts residents. This is because the existing rules only allow subscriber allocations to be updated once, twice per year. Allowing for more frequent updates would remove major obstacles for customers who wish to join community solar programs. As developers can't update subscriber lists more often, they require long-term contracts and impose early termination fees to hedge their risks. While creating a negative experience for all of their customers, these practices disproportionately dissuade low-income customers from participating, which is in direct confrontation with the SMART program's emphasis on increasing low-income customer participation. D O E R should revise the SMART rules to require utilities to update subscriber allocations at least every month to improve the customer experience, public support, and the accessibility of the SMART program. Through our work acquiring subscribers, we have also learned that when it comes to verifying low-income status, less intrusive means provide a better customer experience. To that end, Arcadia supports D O E R's updated definition of low-income customer to include a resident of a low-income eligible area. The way the updated rules are written, however, it is not clear what specifically constitutes a neighborhood. Among the statistical areas used by the United States Census Bureau, census tract data is the most straightforward, sufficiently granular, and can be determined without undue burden. D O E R should include census tracts in their definition of neighborhoods when determining low-income eligible areas. Thank you again for your time, and please do not hesitate to contact me with questions.
Thank you. Next commenter is Elon Gutierrez, and then on deck is Linda Oral. Elon, I see you there, and you're unmuted. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Elon Goodhertz, and I'm Vice President of Policy and Strategy for Borrego Solar. Borrego's been investing here in Massachusetts since 2007. Our Northeast headquarters is home to nearly 150 employees right here in Lowell, Massachusetts. We appreciate that D O E R has proposed to expand the enormously successful SMART program. This is a critical step forward for the industry and for the state. Unfortunately, other elements of the proposed regulations would effectively defeat the purpose of the SMART program by making the most efficient form of solar, ground-mounted solar, all but impossible to build in the future in Massachusetts. The most concerning aspect of the regulations for us are new provisions that will effectively prevent ground-mounted solar from being constructed in over 90% of the state. Regulations rely on GIS layers to determine acceptable lands for project siting, effectively overriding stringent local zoning and permitting processes that are designed specifically to determine whether individual projects can be built in a way that balances environmental and community considerations. These broad provisions were not part of the D O E R's draft proposal last fall, and their adoption on an emergency basis in the middle of an unprecedented crisis without the opportunity for reasoned discussion or analysis sends an unfortunate message, message to companies like ours about the stability of the state's clean energy policies and security that companies can have when we invest our capital in Massachusetts. Moreover, the biomap layers identified in the regs were never subject to a public stakeholder process that included industry, landowners, or other affected entities. The layers the biomap process produced were never intended to be used to make site-specific decisions about individual land uses to restrict how property owners can use their land or to prohibit development altogether. Indeed, if D O E R adopts the regulations in their current form, it would be the first time in the history of the Commonwealth that any form of development, clean energy or otherwise, has been prohibited by reference to these layers. Just as concerning, the emergency regulations double down on the land use subtractor, which is an arbitrary penalty for projects cited in rural areas. The subtractor would now be set at a level that far exceeds any reasonable estimate of the conservation value of the land on which projects are cited. And the increase in this penalty compounds the problems created by the new blanket land use restrictions. These restrictions are going to devastate our business in Massachusetts. If implemented without changes, the rules will eliminate 80% of Borrego's pipeline overnight and severely challenge the economics of our main projects. Be forced to abandon over 130 megawatts of solar projects in advanced stages of development, all of which were slated to be paired with energy storage. Cancellation of these projects will mean the state will lose out on estimated 900 construction jobs, nearly half a billion dollars in private investment, and tens of millions more in lost lease and property tax revenues for rural landowners and towns. We understand that D O E R is in a challenging position and that the administration has received complaints from towns and individuals about the pace of solar development in their communities. And we are 100% supportive of ensuring that solar development, like all development, is carried out in a way that is sustainable, respectful of local preferences, and achieves conservation objectives. We submit, however, that the new regulations do not appropriately balance legitimate concerns for conserving our most precious lands with the urgent need to accelerate renewable energy to bend the curve in the fight against climate change, a fight to which the Baker Administration has fully and rightfully committed itself. Indeed, now is precisely the wrong time to decimate a job-creating industry that the state will need to meet its climate goals and to recover from the crisis we now face. Borrego Solar strongly believes that we can appropriately balance the preservation of our most precious habitats with the acceleration of our low-carbon future. And we are committed to continuing, continuing to work with you to find solutions that promote these two important goals. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony. I will provide written comments as well.
Thank you. The next commenter is Linda Oral. If you could raise your hand. Thank you. I see you. And then Matthew Cozy, you're next up. Linda, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Linda Oral. I'm the Director of Policy with the Trustees of Reservations. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to testify. The trustees has conserved 27,000 acres and 118 reservations around the state and an additional 20,000 acres of privately owned land. We appreciate your thoughtful approach to conserving critical natural resources while supporting solar development across the state. We support and are in line with the comments from our partners at the Nature Conservancy Mass Audubon, Appalachian Mountain Club, and plan to submit written comments. The trustees supports aggressive action to mitigate climate impacts, including the incorporation of natural climate solutions in the state's clean energy policy and solar siting considerations. Natural resources are the only tool we have to draw carbon pollution out of the atmosphere and store it at scale. Massachusetts forests, for example, sequester and store about 15% of all carbon emissions every year. That's nearly 12 million metric tons of carbon a year. And with conservation improved management and reforestation efforts, which the state is currently investing in, our forests have the potential to do significantly more. Natural lands also protect our communities from climate impacts, provide efficient wildlife habitat, drinking water supply protection, and support the outdoor recreation industry, which produces $1 billion in tax revenue every year, and the forest products industry, which is worth $3 billion a year. We urge the state to balance all climate priorities for mitigation, adaptation, and resiliency and your existing land and water conservation and restoration programs while beefing up solar incentives for rooftops, parking lots, brownfields, and other developed areas while conserving and restoring our most critical natural resources, not only for today, but for future generations. I appreciate the opportunity to comment and plan to submit more detailed written comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. The next commenter is Matthew Cozy. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. I see you. And then on deck is Joseph Cavallano. Matthew, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you to the D O E R staff for providing the time to speak today. My name is Matthew Cozy, and I am the Director of Community Scale Markets at Cypress Creek Renewables. Cypress Creek is one of the country's leading solar and storage companies. We develop, finance, and operate and own utility scale and distributed solar facilities across the country, supporting local economies and municipalities with more than eight gigawatts of solar developed and more than two and a half gigawatts under management. In Massachusetts, we've developed dozens of megawatts to date and have projects totally more than 90 megawatts currently in development. This represents more than $200 million in construction activity in the Commonwealth that will not proceed based on the impact of the recently announced regulations. The new regulations, unfortunately, are also halting planned development in the next 18 months of potentially more than 150 megawatts of progress toward the Commonwealth's clean energy goals, representing hundreds of millions of dollars of economic activity in Massachusetts over the next several years. And while this sounds overly negative, let me say the SMART expansion of 1,600 megawatts is a very positive step, but more must still be done. As shown in the expert analysis that's been referenced here today from the Brattle Group in our 2019 study of what it would take for New England to reach 80% emissions reductions by 2050. I will echo the comments from CCSA and CIA here, noting that we understand and appreciate the difficulty in balancing conservation priorities and achieving the Commonwealth's clean energy goals. However, it would be unfortunate for the regulations implementing the SMART expansion, in particular, the new land use designations, to work against achievement of those goals. As written, the three new GIS layers take away significant amounts of land previously eligible for SMART development. And as a remedy, it would be valuable to conduct a regular notice and comment rulemaking on the land use topic to flesh out the full impacts these regs may have on achievement of the Commonwealth's clean energy goals. The new regulations, as written, also impact the timelines and therefore the economics of project development, meaning fewer solar megawatts will be installed in Massachusetts. Specifically issuing statements of qualification only after the DPU has approved revised tariffs from the EDCs implementing the updated regs will effectively prevent projects from receiving SOQs until 2021. And this delay will prevent the construction of projects that have been waitlisted for more than a year. We agree with the recommendation from CCSA and CIA that a pre-SOQ be issued to mitigate these risks and ensure projects move forward. This way, developers have certainty that their projects will move forward and will continue investing dollars in the state and delivering clean energy to Massachusetts. Again, thank you to the commissioner and staff and the participants today for their attention to these critical issues, and we look forward to a collaborative and productive dialogue moving forward. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. The next up is Joseph Cogliano. If you could please raise your hand. Okay, I see you. And then on deck is Lisa Holden. Joseph, you have the floor.
Good morning. My name is Joe Cogliano. I am speaking today as a concerned Massachusetts citizen and as a member of RRSE, Residents for Responsible Solar Energy. RRSE is a local group made up of members from the towns of Norton, Kingston, Carver, and Dartmouth. Our mission is to ensure solar energy facilities are installed safely in appropriate locations and do not infringe upon the rights of the citizens of Massachusetts. The revised SMART program regulations raise many concerns, but I will focus on just a few today. Number one, the revised regulations require energy storage on all projects over 500 kilowatts. Prior to the SMART program, according to the DOER, no large scale solar projects were built in Massachusetts with battery or energy storage systems unless retrofitted. Since most Massachusetts municipalities approved large scale solar bylaws prior to 2018, when battery or energy storage systems were not utilized in large scale solar projects, it is simply not possible that the voters who approved these bylaws intended to include battery or energy storage systems. In order for the DOER to require battery or energy storage systems in all projects over 500 kilowatts, towns have to amend their bylaws to allow battery or energy storage. The DOER should notify all municipalities and all Massachusetts residents of the potential impact of this change in the regulations requiring batteries and energy storage and the need to change their respective bylaws. Number two, battery storage systems using lithium ion batteries may contain hazardous materials such as cobalt. Cobalt itself is toxic and unstable. When used in lithium ion batteries, it produces provides the risk of thermal runaway, a chemical reaction internal to the battery regardless of ambient temperature. When a battery containing cobalt degenerates and goes into a state of thermal runaway, it becomes an unmitigated fire that is toxic and cannot be extinguished by water or flame retardants or contained within its housing. Instead, the fire must be allowed to burn, releasing toxic fumes. How does DOER plan to deal with the hazards to communities from a battery storage system catastrophe when existing protocols are ineffective? For example, contamination to well water supplies. Number three, placing large scale systems in residential areas is contrary to historical zoning for use places residents at unnecessary health risk and noise and damages property values. Number four, ACECs, Areas of Critical Environmental Concern, Well Protection Zones, and Flood Plains should be included in ineligible land use areas in the revised regulations. I do not see them there. And finally, number five, the SMART program is expanding from 1600 megawatts to 3200 megawatt capacity. What is the expected financial cost to Massachusetts citizens and taxpayers for this program? According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the average retail cost of electricity and cents per kilowatt hour in the U.S. is 10.53. Massachusetts' average retail cost is 18.5, or the third highest in the nation after Hawaii and Alaska. How much of the average cost difference is due to Massachusetts alternative energy programs involving subsidy? I think the people of Massachusetts would like to know that. Now, most people are hopeful that solar will be part of our energy future. But let's proceed cautiously and address citizen concerns so that it's a safe future that benefits everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Lisa Holden. Lisa, if you could raise your hand. I see you. Thank you. Then on deck is Doug Pope. Lisa, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. One town of family story may seem small as you evaluate this situation, but I feel that the Roundsville family story is the same as many other rural landowners, farmers, and cranberry bog owners. My family has owned land in Rochester since the mid 1800s and we have been paying taxes on this land since then. I remember as a young at a young age, sitting with my dad as he went through all the tax bills and I remember the stress it caused when the money wasn't always readily available to pay those taxes. Many times land had to be sold to pay taxes. I also learned how much he loved this land and had no desire to see it developed. Fifty years later, I find the situation is the same. Taxes still need to be paid and our family is under more and more pressure to develop our properties. The ability to put our land to use for solar generation solved this problem. The solar project we have been working on for two years would remove six to eight parcels of property from my family's radar for sale or development. This project would have a solar footprint of 110 acres and leave the other 340 acres untouched. Our land would deliver 20 megawatts of renewable energy for the next 20 years, retain meadows for endangered species, and provide the town revenue of $4 million over the term of the project. There is already a process in place to protect primary habitat and we are working with Mass Wildlife Natural Heritage to do this. My dad would have called this a win-win situation. We have turned down solar projects in the past before our town's bylaw change that would have developed that would have seen development of solar on some of our most scenic roads. We rejected these projects. We have always tried to keep the best interests of the town in mind when making decisions regarding our land. To date, my family has placed 540 acres of Rochester land into conservation with 285 acres of this being primary habitat, as well as conserving land and water resources in Metropoisa. The Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources is preventing my family and other landowners from conserving our property. Tree loss is not permanent. Trees are a renewable resource. Many of these parcels are surrounded by stone walls because they were once farmlands. Solar panels are not permanent. Houses and roads are permanent. I ask that you reconsider this rule in light of the unintended consequences it's creating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Doug Pope. Doug, if you could raise your hand. I see you. Thank you. And on deck is Miriam Curland. Doug, the floor is yours.
Yes, to DOER, thank you for for all of the stakeholder interest that you take and you've you've done a great job over the years. We appreciate it. To DOER and to all listening, the story of Lisa Holden is repeated over and over and over again. And given the time, it is my recommendation that DOER remove the core habitat, critical natural landscape, and the biomap two requirements from the regulations. If you if you feel that you need to have some sort of input in there, have a placeholder sentence that would allow you to do something in the guidelines. Please don't put it in the regulations. I've, just like Lisa said, I believe that solar, particularly when you look at the amount of soul that needs to be installed under the Brattle Group report, that solar can be used as a as a species specific mitigation measure, whether it be for pollinators, whether it be for milkweed, for monarch butterflies, whether it be for birds. Once a solid project is developed, it's about basically undisturbed land. We have a we have a very similar story with a farm that that it's a 400 acre farm, 200 acres being developed currently by Toll Brothers and it's the entire parcel is in core habitat and that's critical landscape and biomap to it just loaded. So my recommendation would be as as DOER goes to evaluate, you know, the involves itself in the roadmap process, Kane versus DEP and the compliance implied by that that you take into and you take a look at the what the requirements with the Brattle Group is recommending that we need to do, which is a gigawatt to 2.5 gigawatts of solar a year. It's going to shape how you do the regulations. You won't have a greenfield subtractor. You're going to redo your rates. You won't have a decline block. You're going to have indexed pricing, in my opinion. I think there's a whole, if you look at at a longer time horizon, you're going to be shaping your regulations in a different way. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The next commenter is Miriam Curland. If you could raise your hand, Miriam. And the commenter after that is Ben Underwood. Miriam, if you could raise your hand, please. Miriam, I don't see your hand. If you could raise it, please. Okay, we'll go on to Ben Underwood. Ben, if you could raise your hand, please. And then after Ben will be Lori Connors on deck. Okay, Ben, I see you. Thank you. Ben, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, first off, I think along with a lot of the others, I want to thank the DOER for the work that you all have put into making this program and improving it, in particular in this revision relative to where it was before. I'm with Resident Energy and we're focused on bringing the benefits of solar to low and moderate income communities and to environmental justice communities. Environmental justice communities are those as defined by the state that have high percentage of people who are people of color, a higher percentage of people who are low income, or a higher percentage of people who do not speak English as their first language. This program makes an important step in the right direction in serving environmental justice neighborhoods by extending eligibility to be on a neighborhood basis and not just on the utility rate. That's a great step in the right direction. Also great to see a carve out that protects incentive value for low income customers. With that being said, it's not nearly enough, given that previous programs have really failed to serve EJ communities adequately. I think we're all aware that everybody is paying into the program equally and that low income customers have a disproportionately high energy burden. So it is unacceptable that currently only about 3% of the total projects that are approved or qualified under the program have any direct benefit to low income customers. Good to see the department choosing a new target that's higher, but frankly, 5% is is still much too low. And I would say even verges on being offensive, given that we've had multiple programs that have not really driven benefit. As a benchmark, New York set a target to be 35%. I think that would be a good start. We also need to improve mechanics that make it possible to allocate value to low income customers at no cost without the need for cost recovery. So, you know, to summarize, good, good steps in the right direction here, but we need much, much more, given how inequitable the programs have been so far. So I appreciate the time and look forward to seeing a better program moving forward.
Thank you. The next commenter is Lori Connors. Lori, if you could raise your hand, please. And then after Lori will be Kelly Friend. Lori, please raise your hand. Lori, I don't see your hand raised. If you could, please raise your hand. Okay, Lori, we'll move on to Kelly Friend. I see your hand raised, Kelly. Thank you. And after Kelly will be Peter O'Brien. Kelly, the yourself muted? Oh, there we go. You're unmuted now. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you to Commissioner Woodcock and the Department of Energy Resources for the opportunity to testify today on the SMART emergency regulations. My name is Kelly Friend and I'm the Vice President for Policy and Regulatory Affairs at Nexamp. Nexamp is a Massachusetts solar success story, having grown to over 200 employees from just a few dozen four and a half years ago. Most of this growth is a result of Nexamp's investment in and commitment to the Massachusetts solar market over the past decade. As a Massachusetts headquartered company, we are deeply rooted here, but we are gravely concerned about the future of solar development if the state if the SMART emergency regulations land use provisions are not modified. Specifically, if the land use provisions are finalized, as is, Nexamp will have to write off significant losses from the projects that will be stranded because of these new regulations. Of our over 250 megawatts of currently constructed projects in Massachusetts, nearly 60% of that capacity is community solar projects, 99% of which are ground mounted. Community solar remains the only type of solar development that can serve all Massachusetts ratepayers. That bears repeating, no other form of solar development can serve everyone wishing to participate in the clean energy economy who cannot otherwise access rooftop or other forms of onsite solar and certainly not as cost effectively. While Nexamp can presumably mitigate these losses, the same is not true for other stakeholders. Unfortunately, the landowners and municipalities that host these projects and the resident small businesses and nonprofit customers who stand to benefit from the energy savings these projects generate will lose out. Most importantly, the loss of these projects and many others in the Commonwealth's climate goals will slide further out of reach. We are in an unprecedented economic crisis without a clear end in sight. State tax receipts for the month of April were down 2.1 billion year over year. Municipalities are laying off workers and desperate for state and federal aid. Halfway through May, over 800,000 Massachusetts workers have filed for unemployment. This is not the time to be artificially depressing investment in a critical sector of the Massachusetts economy, notably one that puts millions of dollars back into communities across the Commonwealth that need it the most. We estimate the total loss for Nexamp's canceled projects alone to be nearly 16 million. That includes nearly 6.5 million in local tax revenue lost, over 2.5 million in lost lease revenue for landowners, and over 3.5 million in lost investment in grid infrastructure. For Massachusetts ratepayer, that lost, the loss totals nearly 3.5 million dollars in unrealized energy savings with almost $500,000 in lost savings for low and moderate income families. The climate losses are equally staggering. Without these projects, we lose over 327,000 megawatt hours of clean generation, again, just from our projects alone, roughly the amount of energy needed to power 40,000 households in the Commonwealth for a year. Recognizing over my time, I'll reserve the rest of my comments for written comments in response to this into this public hearing and the emergency rulemaking as a whole. I may thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next commenter is Peter O'Brien. Peter, if you could raise your hand. Thank you. I see you. And after Peter will be Catherine Roundsville. Peter, the, if you could, yourself muted, if you could unmute yourself. Perfect. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Massachusetts SMART program has successfully scaled up energy storage in Massachusetts over the past couple of years. Fluence is one of the leading suppliers of energy storage technology through the SMART program. And we've been proud to see our systems deployed, increasing the value of renewable energy installed in Massachusetts and reducing dependence on costly fossil fuel infrastructure. While we're encouraged to see the state's commitment to building on the success of the SMART program, we have significant concerns about the recent emergency regulations proposed modifications to land usage rules, which were not previously vetted through a stakeholder process. Specifically that the rules, when combined with other barriers to development, essentially prohibit new large scale ground mounted solar projects. Nearly 90% of energy storage capacity installed through the SMART program has been paired with large ground mounted solar projects. If enacted, these changes would severely inhibit the ability to grow energy storage in the state of Massachusetts in a cost effective manner and would hinder Massachusetts's ability to achieve its clean energy and storage goals. With this in mind, we urge the DOER to remove the new land use prohibitions, which effectively remove an additional 40% of the state's landmass for consideration. At a minimum, we urge the DOER to allow earlier stage projects currently in development to be exempted. Massachusetts SMART has been a storage program nearly as much as it has been a solar program and we wanted to remain strong. I'd also add, in response to a comment earlier around battery energy storage technology and the safety, that Fluence would be happy to engage in any discussion about the safety of battery energy storage systems. And cobalt is not necessarily in all battery chemistries. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Catherine Roundsville. Catherine, if you could raise your hand, please. After Catherine is Shannon Healy. Great, thank you, Catherine. I see you. And you're on the floor. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a landowner who has been working with Sunray Solar. With no clear cut rationale, the DOER killed our renewable energy project, which would have provided jobs and tax revenue in southeastern Massachusetts. The project has been underway since 2018. With no warning, you changed the guidelines of land available for solar projects and consequently disqualified all land for and consequently disqualified all land for this project. No projects already underway to be grandfathered. Despite the countless hours and 1.2 million in expenses already incurred, the land in question has been owned for generations by the Roundsville family, a family with deep roots in southeastern Massachusetts spanning centuries. The Roundsville family has historically been a great ally to environmental groups, having placed over 500 acres of land into conservation over generations. Your action has penalized the town of Rochester, its citizens, who would have been provided good jobs, and a family who has always been a great ally to environmental groups. I ask that you please reconsider your decision.
Great, thank you. The next commenter is Shannon Healy. Shannon, thank you. I see your hand. And after Shannon will be Vic Mowanka. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Good morning and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Shannon Healy. I am the proud daughter of Brian and Catherine Roundsville and the niece of Lisa Holden. I grew up in Rochester, Massachusetts, and as you have learned, my family has owned land in Rochester and surrounding towns since the mid 1800s. My comments today are to express a strong opposition to the D O E R rule change that disqualifies land identified as priority habitat from the SMART program. This change in the rules is short sighted. It will hurt many Massachusetts towns, hamper the state's renewable energy opportunities, and will ultimately remove conservation land and destroy natural habitat, which it is meant to protect. Over the past several years, towns across Massachusetts have passed comprehensive laws regulating solar energy development, specifically designed to minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, while supporting renewable energy and providing vital town revenue. These laws act in the best interest of wildlife and natural habitat, while also allowing for responsible development of renewable energy, both of which ultimately benefit the environment. The purpose of the recent changes to the SMART program are also done to protect wildlife and natural habitat, but are short sighted, and they do not accomplish their goals. Due to the increase in cost of land ownership, many landowners have started to explore options to use their land. Many have turned to the development of solar farms, which can provide revenue for small towns, renewable energy for residents and businesses, and jobs for local citizens. Solar farms are also much less invasive than other options. They can provide a steady income for the landowner and are much better for the wildlife and natural habitat than the other option, which is residential or commercial development. If landowners primarily in southeastern Massachusetts are no longer allowed to use their land for solar farms, they will be forced to turn to housing and commercial developments, which are inarguably much more invasive and damaging to the environment. I realize the rule changes were done in the interest of preserving land and natural habitat. The changes not only fail to accomplish the intended goals, but they hurt small towns, citizens of Massachusetts, and landowners, many of whom, including mine, are the greatest allies of environmental protection groups. My family, as you've learned, has donated over 500 acres to conservation and wildlife preservation. Our values align with those of the environmental protection groups, and we have always worked with them. This rule change is adversarial and alienates our family and many others like us, who have always been a friend to the environmental protection groups. Our motivation is not to just simply complete a project by any means necessary. It is simply to finish a project that will be a positive for our town, its residents, the state of Massachusetts, and will allow us to put more land into conservation, which will help the environment. As you can clearly see, the rule change, in fact, has the opposite effect of which it is intended. Please rescind the short sighted change, which disqualifies priority habitat and return the requirements to the original rules. Finally, please consider extending the effective date to a reasonable timeframe so that those who have already started projects are not forced to take a major loss, and those who are considering projects can move on before spending capital and resources. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next commenter is Vic Mowanka. If you could raise your hand, please. And after Vic is Michael Pill. Vic, okay, I see you. Thank you. Vic, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. My name is Vic Mowanka. I'm a clean energy organizer with Clean Water Action. We are a member of the Green Justice Coalition, which I'm representing here today as well. We want to thank the department for its work on this issue and for incorporating some of our previous recommendations. Specifically, we're glad to see consumer protections, more support for municipal projects, qualification for low income projects through geographical neighborhood, and the low income set aside. We believe that with the set aside enacted, we'll be much better able to assess why low income projects have not been moving forward. Nevertheless, we have a number of concerns with the current structures for low income solar, mostly surrounding how low income off takers can sign up for projects and the incentives developers have for low income community shared solar. In addition, we are highly concerned with the I O U, Low Income Community Shared Solar Program. While in theory, this could be effective and efficient, the I O Us have a long history of administering programs that overlook environmental justice communities and needs. We see a huge need for accountability and transparency from both the I O Us and the department. There are few publicly available statistics from the department that show the distribution of solar benefits to various rate classes, raises, income levels of household, et cetera. This is a public program that uses ratepayer resources, as were net metering and SREC. Yet with all three programs, low income and environmental justice communities were largely left out. The way the set aside was implemented now versus at the start of the program shows that low income solar projects are less important to the department than utility scale greenfield solar because low income projects missed out on the initial base rates of the SMART program. It is too late to change that fact, and this contributes to a long term pattern of the Baker administration consistently treating environmental equity as an afterthought. Additionally, only seeing environmental justice through the lens of income is not enough. We know that in the greater Boston area, white households have an average net worth of $270,000, while black families have a net worth of $8. Eight. We also know from national statistics that even after you control for income, African American households have far lower rates of solar adoption. And we can see from COVID-19 that environmental injustices stack cumulatively and are inherently connected with economic justice. Decades of intentional government disinvestment, discrimination, and disenfranchisement in Massachusetts have created injustices that mean that neither monetary incentives nor consumer protections are commensurate to overcome the injustices without fundamentally rethinking the relationship between developers, government decision makers, and low income off takers. We urge the department to see a SMART program as a way to make up for the history of inequitable solar programs rather than as a way to slightly increase the number of low income projects moving forward. We're submitting written comments for the first, and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next commenter is Michael Pill. Michael, if you could raise your hand, please. And after Michael will be Judith Van Ham. Michael, if you could please raise your hand. Michael, I don't see your hand. If you could raise it, please. Okay, great. We'll move on to Judith Van Ham. Judith, if you could please raise your hand. Great, thank you, Judith. Judith, you have the floor.
Judith Van Ham, I'm president of Sustainable South Shore. I'm speaking from my experience in the town of Hull with a solarizing program. And I'd like to make sure that it's easy to organize programs in every community. I happen to qualify for some of those low income benefits, even though, because I moved here when this was a low income town. But if you look at a map, they have elderly people, they're all over. They're not in any particular place. And so just having it, you know, identifying specific areas for having low income benefits doesn't make sense to me. This, what I, what I hear from listening to this morning is that, and from reading regulations, is that this is broken up into lots of little individual parts that are separated by time and by place. And instead, the people who said there ought to be an overall program, you know, or plan that makes use of all of our resources without, without the kind of regulations like, I am a huge supporter of trees, okay? But it needs to be done at a finer scale than it is being done in this program right, right now. So it was helpful for me that under SREC two, there were some major incentives for everybody and for low income people. I'd like to see something work as easily as that for SMART, which takes into consideration heating, which we need, need to address. And I don't, you know, when I look for those incentives, and because we're promoting that here, it's hard to find the information, you know? It's not well organized for, for the potential participant. Just a small thing, I'd like you to be thinking of parking lots. You know, there are lots of school parking lots, shopping parking lots, recreational, like here at Nantucket Beach, we've got a huge parking lot. Those places are great places for a raise of solar. And the only places I see that happening is at train stations. It ought to happen wherever there's a big parking lot. And in talking about batteries, batteries are undergoing a lot of new innovation. And this ought to include incentives for non-toxic batteries so that we have lots of battery storage, but it's using not toxics. Okay, just a bunch of random, seemingly random comments, but I hope to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you there. So that concludes the name, the list of names of people who had registered. What I'd like to attempt, we'll see how this goes, but people who wanted to comment and didn't register to comment, or those individuals who weren't available earlier on, if you could raise your hands now. What I'll plan on doing is going through that list to provide you all an opportunity. So I'll just give it a moment for people to raise their hand there. Looking at the list, there appears to be about 10 to 15 additional people that would like to comment. I'll go through that in the order I see it here. So the first person is Fergus Marshall, and then after Fergus will be Kate O C. Fergus, you have the floor. If you could just self unmute yourself. Sorry, try one more time, Fergus. Great, Fergus, you have the floor.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for doing this. It's a great opportunity for us stakeholders to have our opinion and comments on this really important issue. I notice that most of the participants here are representing the solar industry and not so many that have commented on what is happening in our world today with the climate emergency and how we really have got to face this head on. And I see that the monetary incentive is what is driving this, which is a great thing, but it's not the only thing. And I feel that landowners are being squeezed into having to either pay taxes on their land that they're keeping forested or cutting their trees and entering into a program that's going to pay them to put a solar array up. I, I think it's a very bad choice. I think that these landowners should be being paid to keep their forests intact. And the solar arrays, we have plenty of places to put them. As the previous speaker said, we have rooftops, we have parking lots. We have so many opportunities to install. We don't need to go into the rural areas and find places where people are just strapped for paying their taxes on their land and incentivizing that process. We need to incentivize homeowners, small businesses, large businesses to put them on their parking lots, rooftops, wherever we already have land that is available. The Chickaby landfill is, is closed. It's being capped as we speak. That is a perfect place to put a huge array. Next door to that is Monsanto, which is a private company, which has done that for the last five years. They have a huge array and it's, I'm sure it's producing an awful lot. But my comment is that we really need to address this in an environmental way because no matter what happens, we can never bring back the environment. We can always, always fake money. Thank you so much for hearing my comments and hope everyone has a great day.
Thank you there. Just to remind people, I should have mentioned this earlier, to the extent that you can limit your comments to two minutes, I'd be appreciated to work through the list here. Next up is Kate O C. I'll unmute you. And then after that is Libby Shaw. So Kate O C. You're self muted. If you can unmute yourself. Great. Kate, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm Kate O'Connor. And thank you so much for the opportunity for this commentary and for the proposed rules, especially the land use changes, I think are so valuable because until now, the, the value of forests in their ability to sequester carbon and their role in helping to relieve the climate crisis. And we are in a tremendous crisis right now. Every single tool, including the sequestration of carbon by forests, must be utilized. We can't afford to cut down forests to create solar. It's sort of like taking, taking a couple of steps forward, but taking another step back when everything, every possible solution should be utilized. Forests are, the ability of forests to sequester carbon only increases when we leave them alone and don't manage them. The larger the trees grow, the more carbon they can sequester. So I totally agree that landowners should be paid for the carbon sequestering value of their forests. And solar should be subsidized to go into all the impervious areas. So we really have to support both things and not have the conflict between them. Landowners need to be compensated for the carbon sequestering of their land. And solar needs to be supported to put solar where solar belongs. And I really appreciate the, the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next up is Libby Shaw. Libby, and after Libby will be Maria Bartlet. Libby, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I too really appreciate this opportunity to speak. I heartily endorse the comments of the two previous citizen stakeholders. I'm a citizen stakeholder from eastern Massachusetts. I hugely appreciate the climate tempering effects of the forests in western and southeastern Massachusetts. And I'm doing everything I can in my own town to, to try to support. And I'm doing everything I can in my own town to, to try to support and reasonable environmental stance. We have solar panels. We work hard to for street trees and things like that. What I wanted to speak to specifically is something that seems like it's been very out of the picture in this whole important conversation, and that is we are losing a huge amount of, of our agricultural capacity in this country because of climate change out in, in western parts in the breadbasket and all. We've also seen with COVID-19, a huge effect on the ability to deliver foods to, to Massachusetts, New England. Seems to me that in this equation, we should be thinking very seriously about optimizing agricultural land. We need to be producing foods locally and a number of these properties where people are considering selling to developers or to solar installations. We really need to think about the capacity of the possible capacity of that land for agricultural use. The uses we, we really need to be factoring this in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next commenter then is Maria Bartlett, and then on deck is Rosemary Wessel. Maria, you have the floor. If you could unmute yourself. Maria, you're still self muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Now you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, just very briefly, I am the environmental awareness chair for the Garden Club Federation of Massachusetts. And we represent 180 garden clubs and 11,000 members across the state. And I just want to put in a word for the very important carbon sequestration value of the lands, the undeveloped lands and the forest land. And also our gardens. But that's a side issue. And that I agree with the former speakers who said that there's really no conflict here. Actually, if we can continue to support, incentivize landowners by tax breaks to keep their land undeveloped and then use the permeable or the impermeable surfaces for solar. And that, that's all. I just want to reinforce what has already been said.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Rosemary Wessel, you'll be the next commenter. And then Stephen Roundtree is after that. Rosemary, I'll unmute you. And you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Rosemary Wessel from No Frack Gas and Mass in Pittsfield. And I'm also speaking for our parent organization Berkshire Environmental Action Team. We support the proposed land use citing guidelines that will prohibit solar energy development in sensitive habitats and the addition of what the web mapping tool to determine which parcels will be disqualified. We also support the suggestions of other organizations that web mapping should also include municipal vulnerability maps to avoid solar development in areas subject to climate impacts such as hurricane surge zones, habitat, migration paths, and future potential flood areas due to sea level rise. Priority for development of all STGUs should be used of category one, non-agricultural sites. Perhaps with additional adders for building mounted brownfield eligible landfills, canopies, and public entity sites, leaving category one agricultural as a distant second choice. Category two land use should be prohibited except in rare exceptional cases where no other options exist. By making sure category one, non-agricultural sites are used first, we will be preserving key farmland and habitat that is becoming increasingly essential as we deal with climate change. As seen during this COVID emergency, the role of local and regional food supply becomes crucial when emergencies break down larger national and international supply chains. And as we seek to reduce carbon emissions to net zero or below net zero, as is currently being determined by EEA's mass decarbonization roadmap, we will need to preserve as much undeveloped land as possible to serve as a carbon sink to offset emissions we cannot avoid. We support the requests from the Appalachian Club to increase the value of greenfield subtractors by at least five times as much. Again, we support the suggestion of other organizations that the subtractor should be applied with the whole footprint of the development, not just the area consumed by solar arrays. And the merging of ever source east and ever source west territories, beginning with the ninth capacity block, should not be allowed, though a merger of east and west could benefit some municipal and small scale projects in western Massachusetts where capacity is currently tapped out. It can also facilitate large scale industrial projects in central and western Mass to power the eastern part of the state. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. The next commenter is Stephen Roundtree and on deck is Dan Hendrick. Stephen, you're unmuted. You have the floor.
Thank you, Director. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, you're fine.
Thank you, Director. My name is Stephen Roundtree, Jr. I'm the Northeast Director with Vote Solar. I'd like to thank DOER Commissioner Woodcock for the opportunity to provide testimony. Vote Solar appreciates the incremental enhancements to the SMART program as well as DE, DOER's responsiveness to advocates throughout the process. Vote Solar joins colleagues in expressing concern, however, with the overall scale of the program in relation to Massachusetts climate goals and for fostering sustained market activity of neighboring states like New York. Also, while Vote Solar applauds the acknowledgement of low income environmental justice concern in creating a 5% carve out of the neighborhood scale, we feel the carve out is a too small in comparison with the number of base daters who need bill savings and the benefits of solar and does not ensure that people with low income who face environmental injustices enjoy meaningful benefits when they participate as customers. Vote Solar would also like to offer specific recommendations for low income portions of emergency regulations that you'll see in detail in our written comments. First off, the size of low, low income eligible areas. The definition of low income eligible areas in the emergency reg is unclear due to the introduction of the American Community Survey data. Instead of census blocks or census tracts, we recommend DoE to clarify the exact unit. And also the definition of low income eligible areas. The guideline alludes to alignment between the EJ definition of a Commonwealth and the definition of low income eligible areas. They are actually not the same, it seems. The emergency regs definition says as a neighborhood identified for American Community Survey data that has household income equal to or less than 65% of the statewide median income for Massachusetts. Whereas the EEA EJ population definition cites 25% of the households having annual median income that is equal to or less than 65% of the statewide median. Vote Solar recommends the EEA EJ population definition for low income to use in that, in that instance. And quickly regarding municipal aggregators and EDCs offering low income programs. The, the program now seems to be worded such that those municipal aggregators and EDCs are the only, or they have exclusive rights to serve low income customers. We feel this is the wrong approach and that should be clarified to not restrict the eligibility to those aggregators and EDCs. Vote Solar echoes C as in others' request for immediate issuance of SOQs to avoid project delays. Thank you again for having the opportunity to testify. Vote Solar looks forward to further collaboration with DOER. Thanks.
Thank you for those. Dan Hendrick is the next commenter and then on deck is Jonathan Ruda. Dan, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. Clearway is one of the largest community solar providers in the Commonwealth, and I'm proud to represent the organization. We have 161 megawatts in operation right now and many more in development in Commonwealth. We really appreciate all of DOER's work over the many years that have gone into these regs and we're grateful for the expansion of the program in particular. But it's pretty clear that these regs were written in a very different era than we find ourselves in now. In addition to the tremendous job losses and economic challenges every person and business is facing due to COVID, community solar sales and really therefore the entire community solar development process is ground to a halt. That's really because door to door sales have been halted into a third month now. And it's unclear when exactly they may resume. Some marketing, of course, we can do digitally by mail and by phone, but the best, really the most interactive way to reach potential customers and discuss bill savings is in person. And, you know, as I mentioned, there's really no line of sight to when those sales may resume. And if and when they do, it's going to take months for everybody to rehire, retrain, and restart successful sales operations. NEC, CSC, BAY, Vote Solar and others wrote to DOER about this particular issue, and I want to underscore just how dire the situation is right now. Clearway alone is seeing a more than 75% drop off in sales, just as SMART was beginning to show its promise. And I'm sure that the rest of the industry is experiencing similar results. If community solar providers can't secure customers, we can't authorize projects, we can't rehire workers, we can't build the energy storage system DOER wants, et cetera, and et cetera. Unfortunately, the current SOQ guideline requires community solar and low income community solar to demonstrate 90% subscription by the incentive payment effective date. This may have made sense at one time, but we are in an entirely different world. I think the message we'd like to convey is to ask for more flexibility all around. We're not seeking more incentive. We're seeking more time to hit the milestones. And DOER can change a guideline to do that very simply. And ideally before the June 15 deadline that's out there right now to affirm your desire to come to claim a community solar adder. And I just want to, just in closing, state that community solar and low income community solar pay a particularly important role in equitable access to solar. So just as we're, you know, going forward here, we urge DOER to work with providers to create the needed flexibility so we can all maintain the promise of community solar and low income community solar in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Jonathan Ruda will be the next commenter and then on deck is Walter Dyer. Jonathan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Director. My name is John Ruda. I'm the Town Administrator in the town of Dudley. Very briefly, the town is concerned that the special provision that allows public entities to apply early for SMART does not take into account a lease only arrangement with municipalities. And that public entities that, such as Dudley, have often saturated their offtake needs with net metering credits or on bill credits from past solar projects, but have additional public land available. For example, in Dudley, we have a cap landfill. And that's available for solar development. We're in discussions right now and we also, of course, like a lot of other municipalities, have significant budgetary needs for additional revenue streams. If these projects are left out of the special provision, additional time needed to secure interconnection permitting and public offtakers would ultimately result in reduction of in our case, our overall savings or make the project not financially feasible based on a declining block that the project, the project is able to secure. So we're requesting that projects that are built on public lands and benefit the public entity through lease payments may apply under the special provision for public entities. And I appreciate you, you allowing me to weigh in on behalf of the town of Dudley.
Thank you. Walter Dyer will be the next commenter. Looks like Walter just. Okay, there you are, Walter. I see you now. Just hang tight there. And then on deck is Catherine Chalmansky. So Walter, you're unmuted. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. First off, I'd like to state I'm a proponent of right to farm and solar energy. And since the subject's already been broached, my family's been in the area since 1635. While I appreciate the solar power industry's desire to improve the environment and expand their respective portfolios, there are a couple of issues I'd like to address. First, I object to a 10,000 panel industrial power plant being established 200 feet from my house. Secondly, as a taxpayer, I find it egregious that these power plants are being taxed as on agricultural basis instead of industrial. And finally, I'd like to see more in this is in respect to the dual use. I'd like to see more explicit metrics established to establish, to determine whether a project is successfully dual use. Whereas it's, if it's failed, and then what happens if it does fail? Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you for those comments. The next commenter then is Catherine Chalmansky, and then after her will be Kyle Wallace. Catherine, if you could just unmute yourself, you're self muted. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Catherine Chalmansky from Ameresco. Ameresco is a leading renewable energy company headquartered in Framingham, Massachusetts with over 100 megawatts of solar installed and in development in the Commonwealth. We thank the DOER for their effort to integrate industry comments in the 400 mega review and expanding the program in your effort to address the needs of public entities and low income offtakers and emergency regulations. We will be filing comments as well, but appreciate the opportunity to make testimony in the public hearing. I'd like to make comments on three main issues. First of all, the special provision for public entity projects. Secondly, the solar canopy definition. And thirdly, the low income communities shared solar definition. So first, firstly, we are pleased with the changes made through the special provision for public entity solar tariff generation units, which will allow public entities to apply early and receive a preliminary SOQ. However, one type of municipal arrangement is not covered in this definition, which is for lease only offtake as highlighted by the town of Dudley. Often, public entities issue procurements for solar projects on public land with lease only offtake as an alternative to on belt credits or net metering credits when a town or municipality has already saturated their offtake needs. But they have additional land available and budgetary needs for additional revenue streams. Therefore, a lease only project is the only option that makes sense, even if it excludes this project from seeking a public entity adder. As these public projects need to go through the same procurement processes as projects seeking the public entity adder, they also have the same compliance obligations under chapters 30B and 25A, which create additional hurdles to enlist quickly in the SMART program. If these projects are left out of the special provision, the additional time needed to secure interconnection and permitting ultimately results in the reduction of the project's overall savings. Therefore, we ask the DOER to consider revision to the definition of the special provision for public entity solar tariff generation units to be inclusive of lease only projects on public land that benefits public entities. It's important to note that this project type would not seek an additional incentive, but specifically just looking for inclusion in the early application through the provision. We will provide suggested redline in filed comments. And additionally, we seek clarification from the DOER on what documentation is needed to submit projects seeking the special provision in the SMART portal. I'll keep my other two comments brief as I seem out of time. But specific with, specific to the canopy solar tariff generation unit, we also recommend a slight change in the definition for the canopy as it currently requires 100% of the aggregate nameplate capacity to be installed on the parking service or walkway. In some cases, a portion of the solar canopy overhangs past the edge of a parking lot for structural and safety reasons. Therefore, we recommend that 20% overhang be allowable for projects. And lastly, with regard to the low income community shared solar tariff generation unit, we're asking for clarification that whether standalone QFs are also eligible for this project type. If not, we encourage DOER to consider the eligibility of standalone projects. Thank you for your consideration of these comments and finalizing the SMART regulations. And we look forward to filing comments by June 1st.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Kyle Wallace is the next commenter and final commenter. So Kyle Wallace, I will unmute you and you have the floor.
Thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to provide comments. First of all, Kyle Wallace with Vivint Solar, we're a residential solar developer. First, we appreciate the expansion of the program and the eight additional blocks. But we do have some serious concerns that without reevaluating the total compensation rates and the rate of decline between blocks, that those additional eight blocks won't actually provide much value to the, the under 25 KW segment. We would recommend that the 2% decline from block to block start immediately and not wait until block nine. The, the, if you look at the incentive values for the under 25 KW segment in National Grid and Western Ever Source, it's dropped roughly 50% in the last, since the beginning of the program. But costs have not dropped at that comparable rate. It's creating It's creating an issue where the value of the incentive for the under 25 KW systems will probably drop below the cost of participation in National Grid and Western Ever Source before we even hit block eight. And so at that point, it would be, wouldn't make sense for projects to participate in SMART. And so we, we highly recommend that there be a reevaluation of the base compensation rates. And to better account for the reality of the situation that we're in, where costs have not declined and where the additional blocks will not provide any net value to customers or developers. There's various ways that this could be addressed through either a minimum incentive value, applying the rooftop adder for under 25 KW systems, reevaluating the total compensation rate or other formula changes. We, we believe that without these changes that it, there won't be value going forward and the expansion won't actually help lead to more rooftop solar for residential customers. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. It looks like one more final person has raised their hand and that's Phil Fisher. Phil, I'll unmute you and you'll have the floor. Go ahead, Phil.
Great, thank you. Phil Fisher with NEC Energy Solutions. We're a global provider of energy storage solutions based in Westboro, Massachusetts. We're excited about the program that has been brought forth. SMART has been instrumental in bringing the benefits of renewable energy and more importantly, allowing energy storage to deliver the benefits in terms of efficient, cost-effective, reliable, and resilient energy. We would like to see more public comment around the land use. We see the ability for solar plus storage to really change the dynamics within the Commonwealth. And as a taxpayer, I really see this as a better alternative to typical lot development. Thank you again.
Thank you again. With that, I do not see any further hands raised. And, and I believe we are now at the conclusion of our public hearing. So the time is 12:56. And at this time, I will conclude the public hearing on SMART Emergency Regulations 22520. Thank you, everyone, for listening in and appreciate your time.